I'd like to call to order the City of Apache Junction Council meeting. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Rizzi and the pledge by Councilman Nesser.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do the city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you in the decisions we make that will affect others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask to be humbled in our disagreements and that we never forget we are here to serve the people of this beautiful community. Father, we ask for your continued protection over all of our first responders, those serving in our military and their family members. We ask that they be brought home safely each and every day. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. A presentations to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Heck.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Nesser.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Okay, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Heck.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, words and proclamations. Personal or regional intergovernment updates from the council. Do I have anything? Yes?
I wanted to just talk about the Apache Junction CDC for just a minute. We are moving forward with our October 8th Make a Difference Day. If you have any projects that need, any residents, any neighbors, anybody you know that needs help with cleaning up their yard, their landscaping, there's still time to let us know. For the city, we're looking at cleaning up several of the alleys that have been neglected for quite a while. And I'd like to give a special thank you to one of our officers, Casey She- Shehan, is that how you say? With pause and clause. We were brought to a property that ended up being a renter. But Casey, as hot as it is, he trapped 27 cats out of this house that was really unhealthy. And because of his relationship with the Maricopa County Humane Society, he was able to have, bring some volunteers from them out. And they were able to capture the last six cats. This is going to allow now code compliance to move forward with the home that is, to say the least, extremely unhealthy at this point. But Casey, he, he just showed up every day and standing about 30 feet from the front door, I have a really limited sense of smell. But I couldn't stand the smell that was coming from it. I mean, and he just kept going in and getting the cats out and never complained and I just want to give a great big thank you to Casey because he, and he had another house the same week with the same situation. So we're, we're sort of running into this now more and more with the animal hoarding type situations that we just need to give them extra time off, if that's okay. But please, if you have any projects in mind, we'd love to hear about it. And please keep in mind October 8th for Make a Difference Day. And that's it.
Anyone else? Nope. Nope. Okay. City Managers Report. Bryant.
Good evening, Your Honor, Mayor and Council. Bryant Powell, City Manager. Tonight, we have here with us, for my first item on this agenda, Brian O'Neal from the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport Authority and also Ryan Smith from staff there. And we're excited to invite them in and give us an update to you and to our community on all things at the airport. Bryant?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wilson, Vice Mayor Rizzi, members of City Council. Thank you very much for allowing us to come in and update you on all the great stuff that's happening at Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. Really appreciate it. I'd first like to start off by saying, we really appreciate the town, the City of Apache Junction is one of our owners. You know, we, we see a lot of Mayor Wilson, we see a lot of Bryant, we see a lot of Matt, and it's their leadership and their direction that really helps guide the airport as we continue to grow and, and become a much bigger player in the regional economy. So, thank you very much for that. A really important part of, of who we are is the, the City of Apache Junction. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to go through this fairly quickly. Please, ask any questions during the presentation or you can hold them to the end. But I do want to kind of give you an update on what's going on at the airport. Not just the growth in commercial passenger service, but a lot of the private investment that's going on at the airport and then some of the really cool construction projects that are underway to continue to improve, improve the airport. So the staff at Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, really, we don't consider that we work at an airport. We consider that we work at a 3,000 acre economic development project that just happens to have three 10,000 foot runways and a thriving regional airport as part of our infrastructure. We really think that our overall goal is to support the economy of the Phoenix East Valley and to become a job creator that's going to benefit all of our communities and all of our owners. So, we, we take that role seriously. And I think tonight you'll see that there's a lot of great stuff going on at the airport. First, commercial passenger activity. For fiscal year '22, we had a record-setting year, a little over 1.8 million total passengers. And, and really during COVID, to be a, a leisure, non-daily airport that's generating that type of activity is something, something real special. So, we appreciate the support from the community and, and really have, have noticed a significant increase in those people that are coming into the valley, accessing the valley from outside of the, of the area and, and spending a significant amount of money on lodging and transportation and food and beverage and retail purchases and entertainment. And, and, and we think Apache Junction plays an important role in that. You can see in the yellow there, that yellow oval, for June and July, for June and July, those are the first two months in quite a while where we didn't have record-setting passenger activity. And I kind of wanted to call it out because it's a pattern and a trend that's happening nationally and really something that we're, we're helping the, the airline address. But really, the reason why we've had a reduction in air service is because the airlines can't find any pilots to operate the flights. So, whether it's American or Southwest or Allegiant, we're seeing significant cuts across the board. And we're hopeful as this pilot shortage eases up and we move into the fall and the winter of, of this year and into next year, we're going to see a return to that record-setting passenger activity. But right now, in, in June, we were down about 9%, July, we were down 6%. We see that getting better into the fall, but really the challenge is finding enough pilots to operate the flights because the demand is there. This is our non-stop route map now. You can see we have five airlines, Allegiant, Flare, Sun Country, Swoop, and WestJet, offering over 60 destinations across the United States and, and in Canada. And we're excited to, to report that Flare, Sun Country, Swoop, and WestJet, who are, are seasonal airlines, they will all be returning in October and offering service through April and May. So, really great to have them return and I think that they will provide additional services for those air travelers looking to come from Canada, come across, from across the country, get out of the cold and come to the, the beautiful valley. So, we're real excited to have them coming back. And Allegiant's our largest carrier. Allegiant alone has, has about 55 non-stop destinations. And they continue to grow and, and consider Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport as a focus city. One of the great things about record-setting passenger activity is that we're having more and more air travelers come through the terminal, spending money on food, beverage, and retail concessions. So, about two years ago, the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport Authority invested $2 million to improve our concessions within the terminal. We opened an Oso Brewing Company, which is a big indoor-outdoor sit-down restaurant. We've got a new Panera Bread. We've got two really great retail locations. One is called The Suaro Mercantile and the other is called TripAdvisor. And they are under construction right now with a Macao's Mexican restaurant and an infusion tea and coffee. So, we've really kind of upped our game in the terminal concessions and it's, it's really paid off. We can see where our concession revenue per in plane passenger continues to move upward. And, and that's a real benefit to, to the authority and it's a benefit to the region. Another exciting byproduct of significant growth is we're undertaking a five-gate, 30,000 square foot terminal addition. And this project is being funded through the bipartisan infrastructure law grant that we received, $14.4 million for, for Phase 1. We're going to be requesting the, the remainder of the $28 million in Phase 2 next year. But this is really going to have market improvement on our, on our terminal. Right now, this area is a four-gate, 10,000 square foot temporary facility that was wheeled in in 2007 when Allegiant started to take off. Aviation pun intended. And, and, and so what we found during COVID is that, that is a substandard facility and we couldn't have more than one or two flights operated out of there at a time or it would be a, a significant health hazard and, and a safety risk. And we didn't want to do that. So, we applied for this bipartisan infrastructure law grant and received the money. And starting in September, we're going to tear down the 10,000 square foot four-gate facility and we're going to build a five-gate, 30,000 square foot facility that's going to be just a beautiful addition to the terminal. It's going to be connected to the remainder of the terminal with this glass walkway. So, when you're in the terminal, you can access all loving gates without even having to go outside, which is a real benefit. This is what the glass walkway looks like that will, that will connect gates one through five with the remainder of the terminal. We think it really is an impressive visual for people who are coming to the, to the valley for the first time. And then you can see the inside. The inside is a modern, light, airy, spacious terminal. And we're real excited to get this project started and to be able to offer this to our customers. Another real cool project that's ongoing at the airport is if you've ever flown out of Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, right now, you would be in the ticketing terminal. Once you give them your bag and get your, your boarding pass, you would have to walk outside. You'd have to walk up the sidewalk. You'd have to wait in line to get into the security screening checkpoint. And sometimes in January at 5:30 in the morning, it's cold. And sometimes in August at 2:00 in the afternoon, it's warm. So, we're undertaking a project here where it's called the ticketal, the terminal, the Ticketing Terminal Connector. That's a tough one. And what we're going to do is we're going to build a, a approximately 4,000 square foot facility where it's going to connect the ticketing terminal to the security screening checkpoint. One of the benefits of this is it's going to give us about 30% more security screening queuing. And then it'll keep everybody inside during the inclement weather days. So, real excited about this project as well. And, and both of these projects will be underway in the fall. So, here you can see behind the sign, this is really a, a good test of whether our project is, is one that is worthy of being undertaken. Is behind the sign that exists there now, that's where the Ticketing Terminal Connector is. And it looks like it's always been there. This is going to be a beautiful addition where you can see the expansive walkway that's going to connect the two buildings. So, we're real proud of this and, and we think it's going to be a customer service enhancement for all of our air travelers. Some of the private development is going on. Skybridge, Arizona, just quickly. Skybridge is a 360 acre master development project that is located on the south end of the airport. Excuse me. Skybridge has been successful to date. They've built a 53,000 square foot industrial building and 82,500 square foot hangar. They're investing about $40 million in airfield horizontal infrastructure and a taxi lane extension and the roadways and all the wet and dry utilities. But they recently started moving dirt. They're building a 127-room dual-brand hotel on Sauserman Road. And later this summer, they're also going to be breaking ground on two, 250,000 square foot flex industrial buildings. So, you know, this is a 360 acre parcel on the south end of the airport. We didn't have any money at the time to be able to put the infrastructure in to unlock the, the development potential of it. So, we partnered with Skybridge and it's really worked out great. They're, they're, they're underway with several important projects and we think this has been a real benefit to the airport. This is the hotel that they're building. Half of it is going to be an extended stay product. And then the other half is going to be that nightly transient hotel product that, that you see popping up around the valley. Another great master development opportunity, this is called Gateway East. Gateway East is on the east side of the airport. It's bordered by Ellsworth Road, the expanding State Route 24 and the 202. And Gateway East is a 300 acre, non-aeronautical development opportunity where a company out of Salt Lake City called The Boyer Company is going to be the master developer. And they are going to build a mixed-use project that's going to include first-class office space. It's going to include some more flex industrial. And then it's going to, along Ellsworth Road, it's going to include a lot of commercial retail. So, we're real excited to get this project moving. This project is going to be built across the Gateway Boulevard from the new Gulfstream facility that's going to be erected at the airport. So, you can see here, this is Phase 1. Phase 1 is about 100 acres. And they're underway right now with master planning and making sure that they're getting all the permits they need to undertake this. The City of Mesa is contributing about $25 million. They're putting in the bridge, the, the box culvert, the intersection at Williams Field Road and, and Ellsworth Road. And then they're putting in all the utilities, not just for this side of the site, but the whole 700 acre site across the, the east side of the airport. So, they've been a great partner as well. And we look forward to seeing some of this development spring up over on the east side of the airport. And I mentioned Gulfstream. At the end of last year, Gulfstream announced that they had selected Mesa, Arizona as their new west coast service center facility. Phase 1, as you can see here in the picture, is a three-story office complex and a 225,000 square foot hangar. Phase 2 will be another 225,000 square foot hangar that goes on the other side of the office complex. But they wanted to get a jump on being here at the airport and recruiting talented workers while their, their facility was under construction. So, they leased this 50,000 square foot hangar for the next five years and have been operating on airports since December of last year. So, Gulfstream is a, is a global leader in executive aircraft. And they're, they're a, a welcome new member to the Gateway Airport family. And then if you've been to the airport recently and traveled down Sauserman Road, you can see there's two large steel structures that are going up. This is two of the three buildings that encompass the Gateway Executive Airpark. I, I think most of you have heard that, that recently Virgin Galactic has signed a sublease with the Gateway Executive Airpark. They're going to take two of the three hangars and they're going to build six, up to six spaceships here in Mesa, in the East Valley, every year. And then they're going to bring them, kind of sounds funny saying it because I feel like George Jetson a little bit. But they're going to bring the mothership in and they're going to transport the, the spaceships to New Mexico. And that's where they're going to be doing the launches. So, we won't become a spaceport. We're just a manufacturing facility for the spaceships. But they'll be bringing the mothership in and then transporting the spaceships over to New Mexico for launch. Real excited. I mean, when you look at what's going on at the airport, whether it's Cessna and Embraer or Gulfstream or Virgin Galactic, I mean, they're, we're really starting to get a, a significant level of maintenance repair and overhaul and manufacturing for the aerospace industry, which, which is great. Means high-paying jobs for the region. And then you can't live in the East Valley without seeing the new monument to the East Valley that has been erected over the last two years. This is actually a, a picture. And I put the picture next to the rendering that they provided us two years ago because I wanted to see how well they did. And I, I think everyone can agree that they did a really nice job of, of replicating the rendering in the actual facility. The facility is complete. We are doing a dedication ceremony next Tuesday at 8:00 in the morning. And then between August 26th and August 27th, we're flipping the switch and we're going to transfer air traffic control responsibilities from the old air traffic control tower to the new air traffic control tower. And we'll be using both for the first three months to make sure we get all the bugs out and make sure it's, it's ultra-safe. But eventually, we'll move all responsibility over to the new air traffic control tower and we'll take the old tower down. Our plan right now is to save the cab and then the portion of the air traffic control tower that's above the catwalk. And we'll try and repurpose that and redevelop it into something different at the airport. So, we're real excited about the opportunity of, of being able to repurpose that. But we're real excited about getting into the new tower. You know, our tower's too short and the cab was too small and we didn't have any money. And everyone worked hard in the Arizona way. And we got federal funding, got about $28 million out of $30 million project. And by the end of August, it'll be open and functioning. So, we're real excited about that. Just a couple of other quick projects that are going on. Alpha Apron Expansion Phase 3 and Phase 4. We have 3,000 acres, as I mentioned, but we always seem to run short of, of aircraft parking space for the larger, heavier aircraft. When the Antonov comes in to, to have cargo deliveries or when we've got a 747 there or some of the larger military aircraft. So, the authority has been investing in constructing new aircraft parking apron at the airport. And Alpha Apron Phase 3 opened just before the fire season this year. And the US Forest Service took all of Alpha Apron Phase 3 during the fire season. So, it was great that we had those, that type of infrastructure available. As soon as the air traffic control tower opens, we're going to, we're going to replicate that and we're going to build Alpha Apron Phase 4. So that as the fire seasons come upon us and the US Forest Service is using the, the concrete that we've already built, we'll have extra concrete for some of those larger, large aircraft cargo deliveries. Car rental return lot and car rental care facility, that's just, we're, we're really investing in our car rental companies. It's not money that the authority has. It's money that the authority collects from car rental users. It goes into a dedicated fund. It's called the Customer Facility Charge. So, then we take those CFCs and, and we're able to use that dedicated funding for improvement of infrastructure or facilities for car rentals. So, this is an important project and we're using money that, that their users have been providing over the last several years. Terminal Employee Parking Lot. You know, for years, we allowed the terminal employees to park right next to the airport. And as we got busier and busier, we found out that that lot was so populated, it was closing. First, it was on a couple of major holidays. Now, it's almost every weekend that we run out of parking there. So, across the street, we built an employee parking lot and we're moving 150 employees who park there every day over across the street to open up another 150 spots next to the terminal for our customers. So, I think it's a really good customer service enhancement. Remain Overnight Parking Pad, that's just aircraft parking associated with the terminal. The installation of the sixth TSA Security Screening Checkpoint Lane. You know, if, if you go down to the airport in March, early in the morning, and go down to the airport in March, early in the morning and it's busy and they don't have enough security screening checkpoint lanes open, the queuing gets quite long. So, the TSA invested in putting in the equipment for the sixth lane and then they worked hard to make sure that they were able to staff it. So, during the busiest times of the year, we have all six lanes open and that queuing problem that we had before has, you know, virtually disappeared when they're staffing at appropriate level. So, we're excited about that. Fuel farm storage, tank expansion, right now we've got 250,000 gallons of storage on airport. We need, that's about a three day supply with trucking disruptions and some of the other challenges that we have, we need to up that a little bit. So, we're gonna be adding some additional tanks, try to take that to a five to seven day, five to seven days of storage on airport. And we give, not only us, but we'll give our tenants a lot more comfort level that we're not gonna be running out of fuel. The center runway reconstruction, a major project, again, we have three 10,000 foot runways. They're both a blessing and a curse when the federal government handed them over to us. It's incredible infrastructure. Our airfield is basically the same as Sky Harbor's. But, maintaining three 10,000 foot runways is very expensive. So, we've received some additional FAA entitlement and discretionary funding and we're gonna be closing the center runway for about nine months this next year and doing a reconstruction of the north and the south end of the runway. Important project, you know, if you let those things go, at some point you're not gonna be able to recover them. So, really it's important that we continue to invest in maintaining the facilities at the airport. And the railroad economy parking lot, I don't like to tell people this, but last Christmas Eve, in a driving rainstorm, Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport totally ran out of parking. And it's not like you can tell people coming to the airport, just go to that pay lot down the street. We didn't have any answers. So, we, it was the day before Christmas. Thankfully Chandler Gilbert Community College, we got them on the phone. They let us use one of their parking lots. We put 250 cars in their parking lot and it was then that I vowed we'll never run out of parking again. So, the board agreed, we invested some money, we built another 1,300 parking spaces. That just opened this Christmas. Everybody will be home having ham instead of being at the airport wondering about where the next car is gonna park. So, important project for us and that's, you know, that's a good problem to have, but that's the challenge is trying to keep ahead of the growing popularity of the airport to make sure you've got the facilities and the infrastructure to be able to offer that just plain easy experience for air travelers. And I believe, the last one is, I don't know how many of you have ever heard about Real ID, Travel ID. It started back in 2005. I think Ryan is making me do this, but I feel obligated that the next deadline that they've set, the line in the sand that they've drawn is on May 3rd, 2023 that you have to have in, a Real ID, a Travel ID compliant driver's license or a valid US passport in order to travel. I mentioned that just as a reminder that if you don't have that and you're interested in traveling, you gotta have one or the other else they're not gonna let you travel. And I believe that is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You want to have any questions? Yes.
I just have a comment. It's just, it's been really, it's been really cool to watch this whole thing unfold from the beginning and to spend, you know, the time that I've been on the council, just watching it grow, watching it expand, watching how you guys handle the issues that come up. It's been really neat. And then that tower, that little tower thing that you guys are gonna come, take down or whatever, I don't know what to repurpose it for, but the first thing that came to my mind was restaurant. They got those restaurants that they have in town. I don't know what you guys will do with it.
Yeah, we have some creative geniuses at the airport that wanna turn it into an Airbnb. We're just not in that, we're not in that business.
Somebody will buy it.
Well, I wanted to say thank you and thank you for updating us in our community and, you know, we're, of course I sit on the board over there as well and I get to see a lot of it and I mentioned some of the things that have been happening and, but from the update from you is really putting more information out there for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks. I really appreciate the opportunity to come tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Your honor, I will now introduce Chief Pooley, who will introduce to you your newest sergeants who are recently promoted.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Again, appreciate you letting us come tonight for a special recognition. A couple of weeks ago, we had a sergeant's test in the police world and law enforcement. Sergeant exam is probably one of the toughest exams you'll ever take. We had 15 applicants and we brought tonight our two top performers. I want to present Sergeant Craig Martin. He's been in law enforcement for four years. He's a retired Navy veteran and officer, sorry, Sergeant Joel Eagleton, who's been a police officer for seven years and he's a veteran from the Marine Corps. So, I'll give them a few seconds to say something and we appreciate this opportunity.
Sergeant Martin, thank you guys for having us tonight. I'd just like to say, you know, I came here two years ago and it's been nothing but a blessing since I've been here. So, with the, working with the community and a lot of the council members, so we just appreciate all your support, day in and day out.
Thank you.
The tough part about going second is basically saying ditto, but thank you everybody. I've spoken with you guys before about the drone program and stuff like that. So, I'm very high on the city council and I think you guys are on us, so I appreciate that and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Thank you and congratulations. Matt, if you'll pull up the slideshow, I wanna have a little fun here. It's not often that I get to kick this off and have an opportunity to do this. Joel, I hope you don't kill me, but.
Former chief would have loved to nitpick him a little.
So, before we go to the next slide, I just wanna say what an honor it is to work with Joel and have him as legal counsel and work coordination with him. I asked the League of Cities and Towns about, there's about 100 cities and towns in Arizona and asked, you know, where is Joel at in terms of his tenure? How many city attorneys actually do work for their city this long a period? And the response back from Mr. Tom Belshi was Joel is one of only four in-house attorneys that have served their particular cities for more than 25 years. So, one of four, big deal. So, we have a few photos of time. This is the 1997 press release, city has new attorney and Mayor Coleman said this is, you know, a bunch of great quotes in there about industry and bringing on, going through several candidates. The next slide shows Joel with some of his staff and. This is the surprise, he doesn't know any of this. Next one was Joel in 98, receiving a certificate on City of San Leadership Institute. It's a great program and him teaching at the institute, always, always so willing to help out in that arena. And then Joel, sometimes we don't see him, you know, doing city attorney at his office, but he gets out and gets a chance to be around in the community. Read, I think this was the read to.
Reading program.
Reading program and here's Joel at Rotary presenting. Let's see, out in the community program, we had the neighborhood, neighborhood meetings back in the day. Remember some of these residents? This is our sack race at one of them, Joel and I and former council member. And then pumpkin contest at the employees and George and Joel and Kathy were the judges. Now, we're gonna have to hold this one a bit. I still don't know, I think that's Keith Lewis, Joel and the Rockettes, Dennis Dixon.
Who's working those?
And Rudy maybe or Doug Dobson. Rockstar. Now, this is an interesting photo. This is one of the only photos of the day. That day was the day that the state land and next to Joel, ah, see if we can come back, this thing keeps going, is Jim Duncan, or not Jim Duncan, Jim Rhodes. The gentleman who paid for the first, first. Purchase of the state land was right behind him and that was probably the only photo I've ever seen of that day when we, when the auction for the state land went. And then the next one is me and Joel at the, he was recently, just a couple of years ago honored as the city attorney of the year by his own association, which was really neat. So, your honor, I just thought I'd have a little fun with those. I hope Joel told me, don't embarrass him, but I know you have a couple of things you'd like to present.
Is it fair to say he likes abuse? He sticks around for the abuse.
He must stick around that long.
Yes.
You have to get up. Go, go, go.
Get up, Mr. Stern. Absolutely. You got the mayor up there getting ready to give you something.
Nobody likes that part of the hot seat.
And then I have, well, first off, I'm gonna make a comment concerning it. I remember the first time I had meeting you with you and of course, it's been a few weeks ago now. And it was over horse issues in the community and went to you and we sat down and talked and it was a, I'm gonna say, I've been with other attorneys and it's always been bark, 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 bark and no response and you feel like when you walked out, nothing happened. Well, my impression was with you was we sat and we talked. We talked our way through it and I came away with a great appreciation for you at that time. And that's before I even ran for city council. So, it's been a few weeks ago. Now.
Mayor, the TV folks, they can't hear you.
Oh, shame on them. How dare them. And of course, this is your little presentation as far as the certificate, but the important one is for 25 years of service, they've given you some hours of vacation, 40 hours of time and you will take. That is a requirement.
How many hundreds of.
So, we'll see you in two weeks. And again, I want to say thank you. I sure appreciate your service and your help for our community. Thank you. Now, you wanna say a few words to everybody?
You know, my speaker is really cheap. He is a great speaker, but.
How much time do I have, Joe?
Three minutes.
Turn the thing on.
First of all, thank you very much for the recognition. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It is an honor working for the city and always has been. It's a privilege. It really is. Some people take their jobs for granted. I do not. I never have. I remember when I first started, well, actually I remember the interview. It was a scary, scary interview. It was, first of all, it was in the moldy building. That was scary and I thought, why am I here? This is really awful, but is that Liz laughing at me? Yeah, she is. I got the job and I remember the first day, I came over from, I was in Riverside, that's where I was an assistant city attorney for seven years there about, came over and it was like 5:40 in the morning. I get to my building, which was the old chamber building. So, I got a good building actually, because back then that was one of the best buildings. And I'm looking and there's someone in my office and who is it? It's Keith Lewis. And that guy got here before me and I was very upset about that because I was trying to set a precedent. But, I remember coming and all I had was a fold up table. That was my desk and a fold up chair. That's all I had at the time. So, we have grown from there and I want to thank the past councils for having me. I've had some mentors in the past, Bill Farrell and a bunch of other people that if I start naming them off, I'm gonna forget some. Also, my family, very important to have a very strong family. It's amazing how the family affects you. I've got attorneys in my family. I've got some cousins in California. We won't talk about California anymore, but she did represent Cher one time, she had the doors. So, she was pretty, pretty good at entertainment attorney, but most importantly, my dad. He was admitted to the bar in 1956, I believe. So, he had a partner and the name was Sophie Goby and they had a partnership. So, I modeled that, I tried to see that as a model. Even on his last day when he was dying, he had a client come to him asking him for, for legal services, trying to just suck it out of him and he did it. And if I could aspire to that, and he was 84 years when he died. So, in 25 years, if I'm on my deathbed, which I hope I'm not, but, and I have a client coming to me, I'll be very proud. So, once again, I've probably gone on too long.
I'll put you on speed dial, Joe.
Also, my staff, I have to thank my staff. I've been very, very lucky over the last 25 years. I pick very well, most of the time, but they have been very, very supportive of me, including the prosecutors, Mary Ann and also Eric. So, and of course, the city management and his staff, just amazing. I think I've been through, what, four city managers? And then police chiefs, I think we're in number eight since I've been here. Development services, I think you're number eight since I've been here. Depends on if you count interims. Public works, I think number four. So, I have to train all these people. And the city managers and the assistant city managers, they are the hardest ones to train, I will say. So, anyway, thank you very much and I will see you next week at the league. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Your honor? I'd like to say one thing. It's really, really difficult to be a popular attorney. But, he does it very well. Thank you.
And I will turn it over to Al for some current event updates.
How can I follow that? Not very easily. Good evening, Mayor Wilson, members of the city council. Al Bravo, Public Information Officer for the city of Apache Junction and it is at announcement time, but we've spent enough time, so we'll try to get through these fairly quickly here so we can celebrate the silver anniversary of the newest silver fox of the city of Apache Junction. It's red, excuse me, I'm sorry about that. Before we get into announcements, Vice Mayor Rizzi did want to point out this particular public service announcement, if you will. We have talked a lot about election issues around here the last couple of days and of course, we had a primary election on August the 2nd that we have been discussing and so I know Vice Mayor Rizzi wanted to at least mention this particular website. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, thank you, Al. So, we had our county attorney, several board meetings, several board of supervisor special meetings in regards to the election mishap, whatever you wanna call it. We had the county attorney come last night and speak to us, share some information to the public about reaching out to him with any issues or concerns that you personally experienced. And it was also brought to my attention that through this process, we realized there were, we don't know how many people, but there were numerous people that didn't get to vote for whatever reason. And it was brought to my attention that the state attorney general is asking people to file at this link a complaint so that they can address the issues, they can look into it and find out what happened and, so if you would take the link if anybody didn't get to vote and just, you know, make a report there, we'd appreciate that.
And you can find that at the state of Arizona's Attorney General Office site, right up there. Along those same lines, a reminder that the county board of supervisors are holding a special meeting tomorrow morning at 9:30 to address and to field comments about the election. The live streaming link is at the bottom. They always live stream their meetings just like we do. If anybody in the morning would like to try to listen in on that particular discussion, that is at 9:30 in the morning tomorrow, their meeting is always in Florence, the Penal County Board of Supervisors. In, as far as some announcements to go for tonight, for those of you who were paying attention on Thursday, we got another little stretch of road opened. The State Route 24 from Ironwood down to Williamsfield, so just about to Ellsworth to the airport, as we were talking about before, was opened. We're hoping that that will help relieve some of the traffic coming from Santan Valley into the city that has been using Ironwood because of course, Ironwood is gonna be a very important road for us going forward over the next several years as development happens on either side of Ironwood Drive. So, this, we're hoping will. So this, we're hoping will relieve some of that traffic. It did open a little bit ahead of schedule last Thursday, so that you can see now the 24 going. Couple of things over at Horizon Health and Wellness. This is a program that Horizon is doing with our Apache Junction Public Library for seed celebrations. You can see that's happening on Saturdays. It's essentially the third or fourth Saturday of every month till the end of the year, from 10 till noon. You can see all this stuff and the details at the Apache Junction Public Library's website, which is ajpl.org. You can also, of course, go to Horizon Health and Wellness. They'll tell you all about that, too. And of course, they're always looking for volunteers. So I always want to make sure we mention that you can find some time to volunteer at the garden. Those are the times. That's the contact. And again, you can always go to the Horizon Health and Wellness site to find more of information about volunteering at the Earth Heart Community Garden. Mayor Wilson and Mrs. Mayor were at the farmer's market on the first Saturday of August. And I know the mayor wanted to at least mention a little bit of what was going on that particular Saturday. You can see some of the pictures right up there.
Yeah, it was an opportunity for $15 to get a box filled with fresh fruit and vegetables that was handed out. Where Peg and I are standing is the tables were lined up of all the food. And it was, they had over 600 people show up for it. And it's going to be the first Saturday of the month. They're going to be doing it, repeating it continually. The leftover, I'll say, unpicked-through material, and you see boxes of it sitting there. Some of it went to a food bank. Some of them went to a couple of local restaurants. So it was deemed very useful. You see, there's a couple of boxes of tomatoes back there as well. And the, I would say, some of the materials are on the, I would say, a little bit on the weathered side, saying it kindly. And that went into special boxes and that went to a farm. That went to, actually, some pigs that got to use it, some chickens got to use it. So it was not all going to waste. And again, it's the first Saturday and Peg and I are there and the picture was taken us and we were out there for, at that time, had been out there for a little over four hours. So we were a little, I'll say, worn out.
Good match of that. That's at the old Bachelors Plaza, of course, at the focal point, right here in Apache Junction. I did want to mention, there's an event going on here at City Hall tomorrow morning. There is, continues to be a need for blood, of course. Blood shortages continue in the hospitals and other places around Arizona. And so we will be having our periodic blood drive here at the city tomorrow morning. Still have time to sign up. If you go to the Vitalent website, vitalent.org. It's tomorrow morning, 6:30 to 11:00 in the morning. And the mobile, blood mobile is right here in the parking lot of City Hall, 300 East Superstition. And those are your announcements for tonight, August the 16th, 2022.
Thank you. All right, public hearings. Items number 18 and 19 are related in the same subject matter. After hearing staff's presentation, I will combine the public hearings. Presentation discussed, public hearing considering approval of resolution 22-02. And presentation, discussion, and public hearing consideration approval of ordinance number 1521.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Kelsey Shatnick. I'm a planner on staff. And my presentation for you tonight is regarding the text amendment for Chapter 7 development fees. I know that this item has been kind of reoccurring for almost the past year now, so I will try to keep my presentation brief. Just as a reminder, the Land Use Assumptions Infrastructure Improvements Plan and Development Fee Report was adopted by council on May 17, 2022. Once that study is adopted, the next step in the development fee timeline is to process a text amendment of Chapter 7 to reflect the recommendations found within that study. These changes were provided to you as part of your packet this evening, and they were also provided at the July 5 public hearing. These changes were reviewed both by staff as well as the consultant. With that, staff recommends approval of ordinance number 1521 and the corresponding resolution number 22-02. Upon approval, the new fees will go into effect on October 31, 2022. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that relate specifically to the text amendment. But our consultant, Ben Griffin, is here to answer any last-minute questions you may have in regards to the study as well as development fees in general.
Do you have any questions? Don't see any, so...
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing, so is there a three-minute limit for...
Five, Your Honor, five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Written down here, it says three. One-minute warning you will hear. Please state your name for the record. Do I have anyone from the public that wants to talk on this? Yes?
I have David Day.
Come on up to the speaker, please.
I'd like to thank you, Mayor Wilson, Rizzi, council. I'd like to talk to you about the construction work on the road in front of Apache Junction, Apache Junction Town Homes in Quail Creek. The people that, whoever awarded the contract to, were, politely, ridiculous. We had to do an emergency evacuation of my elderly mom...
Excuse me. So just...
What's that?
This is not on the subject for what we're talking about in the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do the, I have your call to the public. Do I have anyone that wants to speak specifically on these items for the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor?
For the first one, yes.
I move that resolution number 22-02 declaring as the public record that certain documents filed with the city clerk and entitled 2022 Apache Junction City Code, Volume 2, Land Development Code, Chapter 7, Development Fees Be Approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Okay. New business. Consideration and approval of resolution number 2234, resolution of the mayor and city council in the City of Apache Junction, Pinell County, Maricopa County, and Arizona, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August 2, 2022. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. We're here tonight to canvas the election results from the August 2 primary election. This is a requirement by state law. While we are not required to pass this through a resolution, the resolution actually combines all of the data, because they come in separate reports. It puts all the information in one document, one place, so that when I'm calculating requirements versus signatures, for all of the other various reasons we calculate numbers, this also becomes a permanent record. At the time the agenda was published, we did not have the final election results. So at your seat this evening is all of the data that was compiled from Maricopa County and Pinell County. And as you know, the provisional ballots were finally tabulated by Friday. I'm thinking, so the information that is required to be included in this canvas is the total ballots cast, ballots cast for each candidate by precinct, ballots cast for the write-in candidate by precinct, the rejected early ballots by precinct, and the city's total registered voters. This is either a 19 or 20-page document that you have before you. The swearing-in ceremony is scheduled for January at your first council meeting. And if you have any other questions, hopefully I can answer them for you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
From what I understand, when the county attorney was here last night, what's being brought to us is not for us to be looking at whether the election was good, it was bad, or anything else. We're looking at this and either accepting it or not based on, this is what they're telling us they in fact counted and how the counts went. Nothing more.
What they tabulated for ballots cast.
Thank you.
Okay. I have an individual who'd like to speak on the election. Ms. Perkins?
This is, Mr. Mayor? I think that'd be a call to the public, because I don't think there's a public element of this one.
Okay.
But she will be able to speak afterwards.
So do I have a motion on this? Don't have it written down here.
Your Honor, I move that resolution number 22-34 declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August 2, 2022 be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Heck? Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
I'm going to give a short explanation of my vote. I had a lot to say about this last night. And I think it's important that we send the county a very loud and clear message. My vote has nothing to do with trying to overturn or change any results. It has nothing to do with any candidates personally. These candidates, whether the council votes yes or no, will be sworn in, rightfully so. So this isn't a personal issue. This is a message from me to the county that what took place cannot happen. It's not acceptable. We have no way to legitimately say that this is accurate. There were just too many errors. And when we hear that people did not get to vote, there's no way that, there's no way that I could, with integrity, vote yes. And so I'm voting no.
Thank you. Councilmember Nesser?
I've been thinking long and hard on this, so before I give you my vote, I'm going to say pretty much the same thing that Krista just said. I've been voting for about 60 years, 55, and I take my voting very seriously. And I've always been kind of proud that the United States has pretty honest voting. What happened last week, two weeks ago, wasn't dishonest voting, I don't believe. I think it was just a whole lot of badly trained people. And I think the county needs to take the responsibility for saying, that was a mess. It just went from one bad thing to another, to another, and it kept getting worse. And working at the polls out in Gold Canyon, I saw a couple of things, like one where people came in to vote a provisional ballot. Pinell County elections never even delivered the envelopes to us to put those provisional ballots in. And they were put into a clear plastic bag because there was nothing else to put all those ballots in. And things like that. I got, I happened to notice early on that we were running out of Republican ballots. So we called Coolidge quick enough in the morning for them to come and deliver ballots. We didn't have to turn anyone away. But when I went through, looking through the pile after they got delivered, half of them were for Queen Creek. So, I mean, it's like one bad problem after another after another. And Pinell County needs to not let this happen again. As Krista said, no matter whether we vote yes or no for this, we're not changing anything. We're not certifying anything. It's not going to keep anybody from being sworn in or taking office. It has nothing to do with anybody that ran in the election. But I want to send that message to Pinell County that they can't let this happen ever again. So because of that, the only way I have to send that message to them is I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
So, I'm kind of in line with Vice Mayor Rizzi and Councilmember Nesser, except for one thing. If, if all the things that we all felt that went wrong in this election, we owe it to the candidates to, if they choose to dispute this election. And if we don't canvass this election, there's nothing official to dispute. So it is doing a disservice to the candidates to not canvass this election. So I am going to vote yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Well, I, excuse me, my phone rang here. Or it's your phone. I, and of course, I was one of the ones that ran. And I was going around to the polls and saw a lot of, I would say, problems and discussions and everything. And we've addressed them with the county. And of course, they talked to us last night and spent some time explaining what they plan to do and how they plan to correct the problems. And I'll so much agree that the aspect is that we cannot have this happen again. And I also put together a, for my own, I would say, reference to see how things went. And if anyone's interested, they can contact me and talk through it. But I did some comparisons on the 2018, 2020, and of course, 2022 primaries. And it seems kind of in line for the numbers that we have. So I will, again, I will vote yes on this.
Thank you. Motion passes, five to two.
We have no direction to staff. Selection of meeting dates and times and locations.
Your Honor, I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM for Tuesday, September 6, 2022 be held at the city council conference room located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona. And other meetings be scheduled if necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, call to the public. I would like to remind everyone, the call to the public is a courtesy and not required by law. It is the time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Request to speak forms must be completed...
contact me and talk through it. But I did some comparisons on the 2018, 2020, and of course, 2022 primaries. And it seems kind of in line for the numbers that we have. So I will, again, I will vote yes on this.
Thank you. Motion passes. Five to two.
Okay. We have no direction to staff. Selection of meeting dates and times and locations.
Your Honor, I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM for Tuesday, September 6, 2022, be held at the City Council Conference Room located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona. And other meetings be scheduled if necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, call to the public. I would like to remind everyone, the call to the public is a courtesy and not required by law. It is the time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Request to speak forms must be completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, council cannot engage in discussion on issues presented but may respond to criticism, may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly, or place the matter on future agenda for council discussions. There's a three-minute time for the speakers. The speaker will give me their name and their address. I have several speakers. So I'll start with the first one, which I had called before, was Perkins.
Nomah Perkins.
Perkins, excuse me.
Thank you. I wanted to do this last night while the Board of Supervisors representative was here. But as it turns out, there wasn't really a representative for the Board of Supervisors. And I want to commend you all for this dilemma on how to vote. I sympathize with you. You just don't know what to do. It's such a mess. And I want to thank you all for your courtesy, and particularly Mayor Wilson, for reaching out to me when I was so distressed about this whole thing. And I appreciate your courtesy and your attention to my concerns and those of the community. As I said, I had prepared this statement to present while the representative from the Board of Supervisors was here. But since that didn't happen, I will share my thoughts and concerns with you now and again at the Board of Supervisors meeting on Wednesday. That's tomorrow, isn't it? I truly expected that at least one, is that better? I truly expected that at least one member of the Board of Supervisors would be here at the council with, show you enough respect to put in at least an appearance at last night's meeting, but didn't happen. But then, neither have I seen any of you, except Mr. Schroder, down at the Board of Supervisors meetings, all of which I've attended wildly frustrated. At the Board of Supervisors meeting last week, Mr. Volkma read excerpts from Katie Hobbs' Elections Manual stating that they have no alternative but to canvass this botched election. It doesn't seem right to me to ask our representatives, you, to confirm an incomplete election. But I guess that's the way it is. I appreciate that the Board of Supervisors will waive the cost to the city for the contract to conduct the election, which for, in my opinion, all intents and purposes, is not an election at all. Just saying, "Oops, we goofed, and we're sorry, and we're not going to charge you for it," just didn't cut it, as far as I'm concerned. And in fact, the taxpayers will still bear the exorbitant additional costs, either in their city taxes or their county taxes. And I'm so sad and disappointed that our county has been made the laughingstock of the nation due to the mismanagement by our elected Board of Supervisors, and that it reflects on our city. But I want to know what you, as the Board of, as the Apache Junction City Council, are going to do for the general election in November to protect the voting rights of those who were disenfranchised in the so-called primary election. Trust, once lost, must be earned again. And I don't know how we're going to do that. I don't know how we're going to do that. I wonder, if I dare hope that the promised investigation will rectify this untenable situation, may I finish?
No, we're limited to three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Mr. Schroder?
So many issues. George Schroder, 244, West Virginia Street, Apache Junction, Arizona. One, I'm not going to dwell on it. It's already done for the moment, until I go to court and get it rectified. So what the city did to my neighbor across the street, you made her a compound, which she cannot enjoy, our neighborhood anymore. She's going to come, and she's going to complain, and she's going to sue the city for such misconduct and illegal building of the fence. So when she does that, guess whose side I'm going to be on? Okay. So, election, you know, it's great Mr. Volkma come last night, you know, take a sword, take a stab, whatever, for our city. That's great. He showed up. Congratulations. It's the other people who didn't show up. They are people who, two years ago, with similar complaints, with similar stabbing problems, that did nothing about nothing that caused this election to be a fraud. And it is a fraud. Now, again, you have to sign off on it. It's not up to you whether it's right or wrong. It's funny, state writes rules that say, "We have to have an election. We have to have these laws and rules, and this is what's going to happen." Turn around and say, "We can't do a damn thing about it. We have no power in this to do anything about it." And I have talked to plenty of people. I've made my opinion known on the public platforms. And there's very, very many people that agree with me. This is not yesterday or tomorrow. This is yesterday, two years ago, that these people just laid down, nobody cares. We had a chance to change this city, this thing that we got going here in AJ. I'm telling you right now, my opinion, it smells, smells just like Colorado City. We are going to change this legally. I'm not a violent person. We're going to change this legally. And I can tell you, through you, Ms. Rizzi, or Mr. Schroder, or other people who want this changed, speak up. Now, again, the public does not know how much time they have to respond to this lawsuit if they want to go forward. Do you know? Do you know? Do you know? Okay. So it needs to get out in the public what their rights and what their time limits are. This is terrible. Never, like they said, I've never seen anything like this before. Pinell County, in the 40 years I've been here, has been nothing but a disappointment. My streets have done nothing in 40 years. I guarantee it. Something's going to change.
David Day?
I'm sorry for interrupting earlier. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to apologize to the city manager for ambushing him in front of his office. I talked to Public Works. What happened out there was literally atrocious. The contractor was swearing at my brother, spitting at him, calling him foul language. He was trying to go help my mother, who's 86 years old. We had to do an emergency evacuation because they would not allow caregivers to get in there to help her. It's ridiculous. They said no one heard about it. Well, I did. I heard about it from people at Quail Creek and people at the Apache Junction Town Homes. Evidently, the guy assaulted, verbally assaulted the guy who was 90 years old. They wouldn't allow people to go home. They wouldn't allow people to leave. It was ridiculous. Whoever hired them should be ashamed of themselves. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Your address, please.
I'm sorry. 1510 North Rocky Road, Apache Junction.
Thank you. Jackson, Jamie Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, guys. My name's Jeremy Jackson. My address is 1353 South Bel Air Road here in Apache Junction. We've been, me and my wife have been down here about 13 years. We moved down from Colorado. Never really an issue, always fairly quiet. My father-in-law died. We ended up moving in to help my blind mother-in-law, which we still live with. But he had a bunch of stuff. He was a hoarder, not a animal hoarder. He was a hoarder. And so we were always constantly getting stuff out. I mean, even to the point when I owned my own HVAC company for a short time, I kept a commercial dumpster there to just constantly take stuff out of the back, because we didn't have a whole lot of money. And so we had one time when we had a code enforcement situation, just going to happen because we've got a commercial dumpster. We're trying to unload all the time, just and that gate being open and stuff being seen. So with that, we went to court with it. Everything was fine. We went ahead and reconciled with the city. We had it cleaned up and out of the way. No issue. We had another one just come up here just recently. One of our neighbors in our, in our block, not only, not only put us in, but all of everybody that's on our block. It was fun. Sorry, guys. So I figured, okay, we're going to clean it up. We're going to take care of the issue. I went ahead and got emails to code enforcement. I went ahead and called. I was in between code heads of code enforcement in the middle of it. And either, either the correspondence didn't get back and forth or otherwise. We ended up having to go to court with it and still pay a fine after we had already cleaned it up, cleaned up the issue. The issue is because we actually have donations in front of the house, because me and my wife and my six kids, we go feed the homeless and go take care of the homeless in Phoenix. That's the only place I've got for clothes, for clothes donations, stuff like that. Usually only about a few days, they were clean. So I guess the one thing that I've got, I've got 10 seconds, is if there's any way that we can look and see what has changed, because it feels like there's something changed in it, why it's hard. Thanks, guys.
Brian?
Hello, Brian Solar, 220 East 13th Avenue, Apache Junction. And I'm up here today to talk about the fiasco from the election and the fallout in the meeting last night. The one thing we got to absolutely make certain and clear to all the residents of Apache Junction is our city clerk's office did a wonderful job on this election. They got all the information. They made sure everybody's name was right. They made sure everything went over to the county flawlessly. Our city did their job. And I wanted to thank them, thank our city clerk and the city clerk's office for the outstanding work they did on this. And then when it went south, the city clerk's office was making sure all the people that were running got the updated information to tell them what was going on with the county. And I just want everybody in Apache Junction to understand, our clerk's office did a wonderful job on this, and there's no accountability on them at all for what the county did. The county dropped the ball, not our city. And I wanted to say thank you to our city clerk's office and congratulations for 25 years. That's a nice tenure. So congratulations, sir. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two here for two separate, I'll say, issues. Andrew Meek?
Andre.
Andora.
Andre?
Andre.
Andre Meek, 1327 South Bel Air, here in AJ. I've been here one year now, enjoying the city. To expound a little bit on Mr. Jackson's issues with code enforcement, I'm his next-door neighbor. I had some of the same issues. We have one neighbor that is a snowbird. And apparently, you know, I moved in, everything seemed fine. But then code enforcement comes over, says, you know, "You got junk cars and all that." Well, I don't have junk cars. I had some classic vehicles in the back. And so code enforcement says, "You got to license them." No problem. I got them licensed. I had one of the officers come by. He actually went through the backyard, pointed out a couple things that I need to do. No problem there. But even after that was done, you know, she comes back and she says, "Well, you know, I drove by. Your gate was open, and I could see your stuff in the back," you know, "and that, okay, so fine." So I screened the fence and all of that. And I also had a truck that I had used to move from Oregon, 20-foot large package truck, and it was in the backyard. And the neighbor complained that that blocked her view of the mountain. It was in my yard. She's got her own yard to look at the mountain at. So, and neighbor on her other side got complaints also. And I talked to him, and he says, "Yeah, she always complains." Why is one person that complains causes chaos throughout a neighborhood? And, you know, it's, you know, "I don't like you. I'm going to complain on you." Okay? That's wrong. And anyway, so, you know, we got a certified letter from code enforcement saying, okay, you know, make sure your fence is covered and all that, and make sure stuff's picked up. I had some stuff in the carport I was sorting through and everything like that. And I moved a large truck right in front of my shop to keep it out of the way, and it's not in her yard and everything like that. So anyway, my biggest thing is why is code enforcement so selective? They are extremely selective. My neighborhood, it's an older neighborhood, a lot of retired people. She got on me about having two RVs. I got a cabover camper for my truck, which is not a licensed vehicle, plus I have a travel trailer that I'm going to be restoring. And so there's so many people in the whole neighborhood where I live that, you know, have their trailers parked in front, no issues. There are, you know, I acknowledge that there are issues with some houses being really trashy, whatever. Fine, code enforcement should be all over them, you know, but if I'm an everyday person and I happen to have my trailer in my driveway, and you come up and say, "I can't do that," you know, it's just, we're not Scottsdale. We're not Chandler, you know? We're a retirement neighborhood. Thank you.
Your second one?
My second one. Okay. Couple weeks ago, Chief Pooley, he announced that we have some new SRO officers starting at the school. Great news. I was so happy to hear that. But he says, "We're getting two officers." How many schools we have? It is something, and you know, how long are they going to be here? How long is their contract? Like, I believe it was like two years? You know, this is an issue, and you can see it in the news, that two officers in two schools is not near enough. This is something that just needs to be grabbed and made an extreme priority. The safety of the children is number one, you know, and I might, I don't know how to, you know, expound on that. And somehow, we need to be able to take care of all the schools and make it where, you know, nobody will even think about messing with the kids. And, you know, I've heard some suggestions of like getting retired military or something like that, and training them just to, you know, be out there on a volunteer basis or something like, you know, a man in a uniform walking around, you know, going to tour a lot. But I think that that issue there is a huge one. And, you know, great, I'm glad we have two. I'm glad they're armed. But I want to see one in every school. And, you know, yeah, it's money, but everything else is money. You know, you're looking at wanting to hire a new code enforcement officer or two. You know how I feel about that right now. I'd rather have them be policemen.
They got me.
Yeah, see? And so, but, yeah, the enforcement, I got ahold of, tried to get ahold of code enforcement, couldn't even get them. They wouldn't respond. And, you know, question after question, nothing. So, but yet, you know, like Mr. Jackson said, he gets fined. So, thank you.
Okay. Any, any follow-ups from the council?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I'd like to ask Brian to please check with our code office and Victor to find out the whole Bel Air, Royal Palm kind of situation.
Well, we'll report back. We'll look into it and report back.
Yeah, and also with, well, Mr. Meek and Mr. Jackson. Any, anything else? Okay. I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.